I would like to call the May 12, 2025 Hilliard City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts.
Here.
Mr. Carrier.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Hale. Vice President Teeter.
Here.
Ms. Vermillion.
Here.
President Cottone.
Here.
Council has copies of the April 14, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as submitted. There is one item of business this evening, which is a presentation and discussion regarding the proposed zoning code changes for areas near I-70. Mr. Rowley.
Good evening, members of council. I get to wear a couple of different hats tonight. Both the city manager and Mr. Talantino are on vacation at the moment, and so wanted to give you an update on proposed zoning changes to the I-270 area. You might recall that as part of the approval of the comprehensive plan update in 2023, city council expressed a desire to essentially see a preview of these zoning code changes before they go to the planning commission. We've scheduled a special planning commission meeting for May 22, where they'll be seeing the same presentation and ultimately considering these proposed changes, potentially making recommendation to city council before it comes back to you for a normal set of two readings with the ordinance. The community plan, the image did not come up with us on the big screen. The community plan had a land use plan included in it that was really intended to guide future land use decisions within the entire community. The I-270 district was seen as an economic engine, or it really should be seen as an economic engine for the city, helping to fiscally support so many of the programs that operate our city government. And it was also seen as part of the comprehensive plan update in the area that was, in some ways, ripe for redevelopment, infill development that could occur, both based on some available properties within the area, but also based on the age of some of the properties close to I-270, particularly in light industrial areas, and the opportunity for redevelopment as some of these properties perhaps move out of trucking and into newer industries. There were five focus areas within the comp plan update. You're probably familiar with each of these, but the Cemetery Road Corridor, the Big Darby area, Old Hilliard, the retired rail corridor, and then also I-270. In 2024, city council adopted the Conservation Employment District for the Darby region, and as part of that adoption, you adopted a new Chapter 1116. And that chapter serves as the basis for a lot of the things that we are talking about tonight. And it included typologies, design standards and guidelines, building typologies, parking typologies, open space typologies, and frontage typologies. And I just mentioned this for context, this section of the chapter was included in your packet, but I did not print it out for you tonight because it was previously adopted. But you need, as projects come forward, we use the entirety of this chapter to really analyze developments. And we do that by first looking at the parcels location, looking at the building type that has been proposed and whether or not the typology is allowed within that area. You look at the frontage typologies that are permitted in that district. And then just sort of skipping down to step six, you look at the general uses that are permitted within that area. And so those uses and the frontage issues really are specific, in some cases, to the I-270 district that we're talking about tonight, and those are printed out for you. The map of the proposed zoning code changes has a couple of distinct areas in it. You'll probably notice in yellow Hickory Chase, which is labeled as I-3 suburban, the Verizon site, which is I-6 urban core. That large office site was always envisioned in the comp plan update as potentially having the ability for densification. And you'll see in the table of uses that it has a slightly broader set of secondary permitted uses, and I'll touch on that in a moment. Most of the map that you see in purple is labeled as flex employment. Many of these parcels today have kind of light industrial uses. Some of them have a I-1 zoning classification today, some are PUD, and then I believe some are B-4 zoning classification. Just want to highlight also that the Mill Run area is included in these proposed changes. You may have heard Mr. Talantino talk about this before, but when Mill Run was originally developed, there was the possibility of what is now Tuttle Mall being located in that general area. And the zoning texts that were developed for Mill Run, at least within Hilliard, were very site-specific, down to the individual retailer, for example, that would be located on that site. And so when we have redevelopment occur today, those sites typically require a PUD modification for any new use. And we try and update the PUD in such a way that it gives flexibility going forward. But what we're proposing now is to, by right, clarify what the zoning standards are for Mill Run, to really make it clear for future redevelopment and future users who may be looking to redevelop as to what can be done. On the I-270 district, always envisioned that it would be an employment base for the community, but that in certain areas, we could not only see office uses, but also have limited infill residential or commercial development if the office, certain office thresholds were achieved. This is a picture of Grandview Yard. It's a pretty strong example of where you see a mix of office and residential happening. And I mention it because one of the things that we've seen in the market in the last couple of years is that office is seeking places that really have amenities, that are amenity-rich. You of course see that in the Dublin area, where there's a mix of uses in Bridge Park. But in Grandview Yard, you also have that, a little bit less first-floor commercial, but certainly a mix of office and residential with commercial in that redevelopment. What we really see an opportunity for in many portions of Hilliard is additional flex office. We're seeing that right now. This is a picture of the 10B development up on Edwards Farm Road, but 10B is also doing a project in Mill Run, where they're redeveloping what had been the Ohio State Medical Site close to One Mill Run. Some of you may have seen that construction from I-270. We think that there's real potential in many of these areas close to I-270 for additional flex office space, where you have office space, but you also have space within these buildings that are flexible, that they might be doing R&amp;D work, they might have some light assembly of products in them, but there's real flexibility and we can attract higher end-users to some of these spaces. The Mill Run district, as I mentioned, has very specific site PEDs. In some cases, they were as specific as the individual restaurant that would go on a certain site. And so it really was seen as an opportunity with some of these zoning code changes for us to make the zoning text clearer for future users or future redevelopers of these parcels. And I think, as you've probably all seen, Mill Run feels like a retail area that is probably ready for some of that redevelopment. On the Columbus side, the movie theater was torn down, and they're now proposing some apartments for that side. But I think you can see that starting to happen. As I mentioned, the 10B site close to One Mill Run in Hilliard did that as well. And we think that that rezoning in this case will make it a little bit easier and clearer for people that are looking to do that. One of the big changes in this code is a concept called secondary permitted uses. And what that really means in practice is, if you achieve a minimum of 10,000 square feet per acre as dedicated to a permitted use, that there are a range of secondary permitted uses that are allowed. And in the case of phased developments, at least 50% of the permitted uses must be established before concurrently with the secondary uses on the site. So we'll sort of walk through the table of uses and give you an example or two of this. This chart has a lot of information on it, so I just want to briefly kind of run through what you're looking at. The Ps that are on this chart are permitted uses. The Cs are conditional uses. Those are the cases that go before the planning commission and then come to city council for their, for your consideration today. And then the Sp's are the secondary permitted uses. The columns that you see at the top, that I-1 is more or less the naturalized spaces that are close to I-270. I-3 includes the area close to Hickory Chase. I-6 would be the urban areas or the Verizon site today. The IFE would be the flex employment. And then the IMR is the Mill Run area. And so if you sort of go across, you can see what is proposed as either permitted, conditional, or secondary permitted uses in each of those areas. What we've tried to do is to put in place zoning standards by right that would encourage office and flex office in most of these areas. And so you see at the bottom of this chart, most of the office users, office uses rather, are permitted. And then many of the other items are either conditional or secondary permitted. These charts continue, you can see some lesser or less common uses within our zoning. But veterinary hospital or clinic, we've had one of these open close to the Giant Eagle recently. You can see some additional secondary permitted uses, things like restaurants and bars that would potentially be permitted in some of these areas. Mill Run, for example, makes sense. And if you continue on, we have some additional permitted uses within the flex employment and in Mill Run for light industrial brewery, light manufacturing, and R&amp;D facilities. So this is really sort of the core of what we're presenting to you. This chart is sort of unglamorous as it looks, really is the core of what some of the decisions are going to be before you and the planning commission about what should be permitted where, and exactly how it should be permitted. So let me offer an example. Within a 10-acre site along I-270, if that property has 10,000 square feet of office per acre, once that threshold's met, various secondary permitted uses could be constructed on that site by right. Those might include residential uses, multifamily, or commercial uses. And really, this is envisioning mixed-use development. And there are a couple of examples that we've already got in Hilliard of horizontal mixed-use. And I would offer the area close to Giant Eagle as one example, where you have the grocery store, some retail, you have the medical office buildings that went in as part of that development, and then you've got multifamily housing that went in as well, close to the Goat. You've got some examples around central Ohio and perhaps within True Point as well of vertical mixed-use, where you have first-floor residential, or first-floor commercial, rather. You might have second-floor office in that mixed-use, and then you have upper-story residential. True Point sort of has a mix of horizontal and vertical mixed-use components. So True Point's got a couple of situations where it has first-floor commercial and then residential above it, but for the most part, it's horizontal, where you have a new office building, you've got some commercial buildings, and then you've got residential at that southern end. You might also see this within the flex employment area, where if a site had 10,000 square feet of tech flex per acre, that space that I was showing you earlier that 10B constructed, they could also be allowed to have these secondary permitted uses by right. And those might include some limited commercial, certainly could include multifamily housing if they had site enough space on a site. So I've given you a lot of information. Certainly want to open up to your discussion and any questions that you've got. But this is the second of the five focus areas to come forward. And this process is intended to be pretty deliberate and careful as we're moving forward. Certainly want to get your feedback and take that to the planning commission so that we can bring this back in a form that's acceptable to city council.
I have a question. I have one question. We talk about flex space a lot. What is the length of occupancy for flex space on average?
Make sure that I can answer that question. Many of the flex spaces that have been constructed have been constructed in the last couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And so I don't think we've even seen turnover in those buildings yet.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Dan. I have a couple of questions. First, I love Grandview Yard. It was being built when I used to live in Grandview, so consider me generally a fan of where we're going here. But I, so I have a question about the I-6 corridor. That's the Verizon building, is that correct? Did you approach the other property owners in that corridor and ask if they'd like to be included in this?
We did have a conversation with another property owner in this area and asked the question. We've not yet heard back whether they'd like to be included in this.
Okay. If other property owners wanted to opt in, is that something we could amend to include?
Absolutely.
Okay. The data center on the secondary permitted, are we talking like the Amazon data center?
We're not. I don't know that many people realize it, but Verizon actually has a small data center on their campus. And so it was intended to be, just as the name suggests, sort of a secondary use on a site that might have office on it, and do so in a way that allows Verizon to continue to be in operation if they wanted to.
Okay. So like a server-type of facility?
Correct.
I would be frankly strongly opposed if we were talking about another Amazon.
Yeah. The proposed changes do not permit additional data center opportunities, and you'll note that the two Amazon campuses that are within this corridor are not part of the rezoning that we're talking about.
Cool. And then my last question was, for these buildings, am I like the option of the vertical or horizontal mixed-use? How many floors are permitted in this? Like, how many stories? How tall are we talking?
Well, let's look at the building typology, because that will answer some of those questions.
And this may be me not able to read these charts. Like, it might be a me problem. So I'm sorry if it is. Okay. I see that, are we looking at like on page three on the right?
Page three? Oh, of the I-270?
Yeah. And the like principal building height, like 150 feet?
Correct.
What does that, five stories? Okay.
Yeah, it might be more than that, actually.
More than that?
Yeah. So you typically have a first floor.
On the right?
Yeah.
15 stories?
Yeah, I think in a modern commercial building, you might be closer to 15 feet per story. But the first floor typically has a higher elevation. It might be 20 feet.
And would they just be able to do that off the bat if we approved this? Or is that something that would come back through us and we'd look at like where it is? Or it's just, it would set it as a standard?
They would have the ability to do this by right.
Okay.
So I guess that's a great question to ask all of you, is whether you're comfortable with that. The area close to I-270, as we went through the comp plan update, was always envisioned as having the potential for some additional height in it, because it frankly is closer to the highway and can be absorbed a little bit more easily visually. But that's a question that I think each of you need to also ask as to exactly where you feel comfortable with that.
Okay. Could we, it would be helpful for me, like are there other areas in town that are like 15 stories tall, so that we can just kind of, not in Hilliard, I know, but like Bridge Park, I think, is shorter than that, right? Like, we're in deep downtown Columbus, I thought, to get that tall, but I might not be correct.
I was thinking the same thing, some reference, because spatially, I can never picture what you're talking about.
Happy to bring that back.
Thank you. And I just, last comment for my colleagues, I like the inclusion of the secondary permitted use of some housing, because I think that's a big need, so.
What?
The housing as a secondary permitted, if they met the initial permitted. And thank you for explaining that, how the secondary permitted worked, so, thank you.
I have one other small question. On that first map you showed with Mill Run, is what you showed, just the Hilliard part of Mill Run?
It is.
Okay. And how far does that go on the little hook on the left? So it goes around, does it stop before the blood bank or whatever that is?
The hook, are you speaking on the far right over here?
I don't know.
So they...
I'm talking like this.
Oh. They should have had a paper.
So, because this brown part looks like it goes all the way over to where the construction is, but I didn't think Hilliard's part went that far. Do you know what I'm talking about? The Columbus's building where the theater was? Right.
Everything to the east of Fishinger is in Columbus, and then part of that Lowe's Shopping Center is in Columbus as well.
I know that. Kelly McGivern told me the row. Okay, that's okay. It's not a big deal. I was just curious.
I'm sure I understood your question, though. Could you rephrase that?
Well, just that this brown is all Hilliard. I'm just trying to picture exactly where in Mill Run that is, but it's not important for this conversation, really.
So what you see is the area behind Lowe's, between the freeway and Lowe's, that is within Hilliard. One Mill Run is in there.
Gotcha. Okay, I was on the wrong side of it.
CVS, I think there's now a paint store. Cam is in Hilliard.
Yeah.
A floor and decor. I'm sorry. The running store is back there.
Okay. I got it now. Thank you. Does anybody else have?
Thanks. Mr. Rowley, could you go back a couple of slides to the secondary permitted use? I thought it said green space was a secondary permitted use, and I could be mistaken.
On this screen?
Yes, thank you. So under public and institutional greens, open space and greenways, are secondary permitted uses in those three sections? Can you explain that?
Sure. The intent is that these sites get developed with an active use that essentially has a financial benefit to the city. And so what we want is for these sites to be developed with some level of intensity to generate income tax. And if they meet the threshold necessary, then they can have open space as part of the development, but it shouldn't be the primary objective in the development of these sites.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that also we wanted these to be like walkable districts as well. So is walkability going to be part of the application requirement, even though it's not listed out here?
It is. So if you think particularly about some of the larger sites, take the Verizon site as an example, and the image that I showed of Grandview Yard at the beginning, they created blocks as part of that development. That was an important part of walkability that was created in that area and the mix of uses that was created. So the intent with those sites is that redevelopment doesn't just happen in a clustered fashion, but that it happens in a way that encourages that first-floor active space. It might include retail, it might include other uses, but walkability is part of that.
So that is still going to be a part of the question intent, is to have it very connected and walkable and green in there somewhere?
Correct. And you can kind of see that in the typologies and how they are asking these buildings to lay out on sites as they redevelop. Challenge, obviously, is that some of the light industrial areas have already been built, and so zoning code changes aren't a magic fairy dust. They won't completely redevelop as soon as this is passed, and so it'll happen incrementally. And in some of these areas, particularly along the freeway, the walkability is, today isn't as great as it probably needs to be in the future. Our intent is to put standards in place that encourage that.
Okay, cool. And then how did the recommendation of 10,000 square feet of office per acre, is that a standard across like Ohio, or where'd that number come from?
We looked at a variety of large office sites around central Ohio, including a couple in Hilliard, and looked at the average amount of office space per acre, and they were all within a range of about 9,000 to 11,000 square feet. It may not be a perfect number. The intent is that we're setting a standard, that we communicate that we're wanting office space at a fairly high level on these sites, or flex office space, or medical office space. But it may be the case in reality that some of these projects come forward and we say, we really like a lot of these details, but they don't quite meet the threshold, and then we'll have to figure out if that's a variance process, or if we want to really squeeze and make sure that they meet the threshold formally.
Okay. And then I do see building width and depth maximums. So is there a recommendation for like X number of buildings per site? Or if they can get the amount of office space going vertically, then like, you know what I mean? This may not...
No, that speaks to your first question.
Yeah.
So those maximums are designed to encourage blocks, in some cases, and encourage not just one big uniform building, but a series of perhaps smaller, more modest-sized buildings that are a little bit more approachable from a pedestrian scale.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
So I wondered if we could go back to the map. So the flex employment area, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's all considered I-270, correct?
We're considering it within the I-270 district, but some of these areas obviously stretch fairly far up northwest. For example, Weaver Court, north and south, it may be a little bit further to the west than I-270.
Yeah, I was looking at that section south of Leep, or I guess that's west of Leep Road. That seemed really far west to be I-270 corridor, but...
Correct. It was based on the uses that are in those sites today and their current zoning. So those are I-1 zoning today, in that Weaver Court, north and south area along northwest, sort of stops, that purple area stops at the fairgrounds on the map that you're seeing on the screen.
Okay. And if you go over to Riggins Road and you follow it to where it deadends on the east side, to the left, which is white, what is that?
That's the building that we sometimes refer to as the BMW building, or the former BMW building.
So why is that in white?
Want to touch on this, but...
The property owner has been contacted, or the attorney for the property owner was contacted, to see if they wanted to be included in this rezoning, and we have not heard back whether they want to be included.
But you didn't contact every other property owner that's in purple, did you?
No, we didn't, but we're in active litigation with that property owner, and we didn't feel it was in the best interest of the city to not consult them on a rezoning application. But every property owner has been contacted, letters were sent this week to tell them about the rezoning.
Okay, so everybody... Okay, so everybody here who's in flex employment has been contacted?
Letters were sent, I believe, last, last week. I think they were mailed last week with information of when future public meetings would be held.
Thank you. What kind of businesses are going in so far at the 10B building?
We can bring that information back to you. I think it's probably a better question for David Meadows, but what we've, I think, generally seen has been R&amp;D businesses going in that 10B business on Edwards Farm.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch that.
Sorry. I can, we can bring a more, a fuller list back to you at a future meeting. It's probably a question for David Meadows to answer more fully, because in some cases, the leases have, I think, been entered into, but the spaces aren't occupied yet.
Okay.
But to date, what I've heard anecdotally is that we've been seeing a really good response from R&amp;D companies going into that space. That building in particular is of high quality, and then we seem to be seeing the types of companies that we want to attract into that flex office space.
Okay. Yeah, that is a nice-looking building. I would be interested in knowing, like, income tax projections on those, since that, that was a big item of discussion. So for example, the Amazon buildings off of Britton Parkway, which take up, I don't know how many acres. Do you, do you know how many acres that is?
I don't, off the top of my head.
I'd be curious to know their, how their income tax per square foot compares to other buildings with much smaller acreage footprints. Do you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
I know that their jobs are, you know, higher-paying, but there's not that many of them, and there's a huge amount of acreage there. So I'm curious to know how they're really comparing to some of these other smaller plots.
Happy to try and bring some of that information back to you, to the extent that we're able to share that.
So when this goes to planning and zoning, are they voting, or is this just informational for them as well?
No, they're, they're going to be asked to vote and make a recommendation to City Council. They're an arm of City Council, and so their review is one that typically, on a zoning code change, would, they would see it first and make a recommendation to Council, and it might include some changes as part of the proposed code.
And then lastly, I'm not sure if I'm looking at the map correctly. So Cemetery Road continues, and then I see, I see a bunch of white space. What, what area is that, that that's not purple as well?
There's a, are you talking about Cemetery Road itself, close to I-270, for example?
Yeah, you see I-270, and then there, there's that huge white space in the middle where Cemetery Road comes up.
There are two different things. I'm not sure which one. The Cemetery Road, it was a focus area, and we're, we're planning to bring an additional zoning code change for that district at some point, probably early next year, for zoning code changes. But the area east of I-270, you might be referring to is the area along Truman Boulevard? Is that the area that you're talking about as well?
No, I was actually looking right to the west of I-270.
Yeah, that would be within the Cemetery Road focus area.
So even though it's right on 270, you, you don't consider that part of the I-270 corridor?
Well, we had to essentially draw a line somewhere in these zoning code changes. They may end up having somewhat similar zoning code uses, but the comp plan envisioned that some of these areas close to I-270, we have a mix of trucking firms, some hotels, obviously, you have some restaurants close to I-270, that it might have the ability to redevelop in a way that's slightly different than just flex employment. And so we've yet to go through that process and draft what that code looks like, but I think it's reasonable to think about that area close to Cemetery Road, perhaps a little bit differently than the rest of the area that's on this map.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Are there any other questions? You want? Okay. Then, does Council have any other items to discuss? All right, then, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.